Laurie is running a little bit late, he's at a different venue at the moment, but we'll get him in a minute. So we'll go into 1.2, any declaration of members' conflict of interest or any change in the position that should be recorded? Just to let you know, I'm no longer a director of Statewide Super, that fund and company has been wound up. So that's all closed off now for the end of that one. Okay.
Oh, sorry, it's got me down, it's Electoral Commission of Australia, or South Australia.
Is that in the minutes?
It's on page.
Yeah, we'll come to the minutes at 1.4, which is on that broader one at the moment. All right, we'll ask Laurie that question when he comes in. Does anybody want a discussion audit, just not here, with the mayor or management without other people involved? No, I think we're all good then. Again, if you'd like that, some pre-notification would be appreciated. Okay, we have on page three, we have the minutes of the previous meeting. We'll just note South Australia on page four rather than that, or input, so happy with that?
Yes, instead of Australian, South Australian.
Anybody else, the minutes were distributed? Just for me, I should have picked this up before, on page 12, down the bottom where we've got that, the upgrade requirement for the Waila Airport. It's got inclusion of current cost and low impact, that should be inclusion of current cash flow impact. I think it was my writing. So just a minor one, but it's the cash flow because I was trying to work out what's cost and low. So with those minor amendments, we're happy to accept, we have a recommendation there, can I have a mover? Thanks, Pete, second to thanks Pat, all those in favour, that one's passed. Okay, we have the business arising, Cathy, do you want to take us through there because there's some updates?
In relation to the Business Continuity Plan, we do have a report on the agenda in relation to Emergency Management Plan and Business Continuity, et cetera. We have actually gone back within, from the administration point of view, gone backwards and forwards, backwards and forwards in terms of the BCP and the development of a scenario testing plan and also updating the BCP. And since the commencement of our WHS and risk partner, the whole of the system of emergency management planning and business continuity planning has had quite some review. And we identified that it wasn't consistent between the plans. And so we are now doing that body of work to ensure there is consistency between the plans. Just for the committee's point of reference, we have an overarching emergency management plan. We have a WHS emergency management plan and we have our business continuity plans. And each of them had their own area testing, each of them had different requirements in terms of oversight escalation. So we now want to actually ensure that they are consistent with each other, that the scenario testing is actually talking to each other so that we're not doubling up in a 12-month period in terms of scenario testing for these specific work areas. So that will come back to the committee in February 2025.
Okay, thanks Cathy. And I know is that 2.6, we've got a deeper dive into the risk management policy and and also profiles with that benchmarking there, so we can dive into it there.
Yeah, and then probably the other one is the open space and community playing fields service review. We have received additional information from BDO in the context of benchmark data from other councils. We are doing the body of work around that internally in the context of having a look at service level standards and what will be appropriate service level standards to bring back to the Audit Risk Committee and also going to council. And so that is a body of work that again, I'll be looking to bring that back, not to the October one, but to the February 2025 committee meeting.
Yep.
And in terms of the Waila Childcare Centre, that report is on the agenda for this current meeting. People and Culture Policies is also on the agenda for this current meeting.
Yep.
And updates in terms of our service review programme. I was actually intending to bring to this meeting a paper which discussed the entire service review programme and the engagement of BDO. I haven't actually been able to get that paper to this meeting, but it will certainly come in quickly.
Sure. And again, I think we've got enough planning at the moment anyway, so that's not going to hold anything up. So thanks Cathy. Can you just give us a status update on page 17 as well? In relation to the many land management plans and leases, given that, you know, we're nearly six months post the original date on that one there.
Yep. Yep, we've held quite a number of workshops with council in relation to the matter of all of the leases and licences that we've got across the city. The framework for leases and licences dovetails into community land management plans, which are required to have under the Local Government Act. And there needs to be a body of work which goes into reviewing those community land management plans as well. The review of the leases and licences is occurring in the context of multiple actions. One action in terms of the review is reviewing the fees and charges. It has been observed by the administration and by the council for quite some time now that the leases and licences fees and charges is really quite out of step in terms of what is fair and reasonable in, from the perspective of community groups, commercial leases and the cost to council in relation to maintaining its building stock across the city. We have done a review, we engaged Bentley's to do a review of the fees and charges. We have the draft reporting from Bentley's and they have proposed a framework by which to review all of the fees and charges that are occurring. That report will come to the February Audit and Risk Committee, it's a very detailed report. That report has identified some, and I might come back to that this later in the meeting, has identified quite some gaps in terms of fees and charges. It's fair to say that bringing in the new framework or a new framework around fees and charges will take quite some time, given that we've got some leases that are of quite lengthy duration. And to retrospectively apply leases, we have to work out a process.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks Cathy. The only other one for me is just on that action statement, if we can have the Q2 financial review, we're going to bring remediation plans as well. I know we've got a section deal in that 4.1, or we'll have a workshop, but that was an action we asked for as well, how we could get back to the original budget. So is there anything on the work programme for February that you're concerned about?
No.
Okay, all good. All right, I'll open it up for discussion, Peter?
Nothing for me, thanks.
I think that's, I know I'm fine as well. So we have the recommendation. Can I have a mover? Thanks Pat, second to thanks Pete, all those in favour, that's passed. Cathy, I'd like to call a break, 10 minutes if we could, is that possible?
Sure.
All right, we'll break for, or break for 15. Can I have a mover? Thanks Pat, second to thanks Pete, approved. We're back into the meeting. Okay, 2.1, this is the second part of this one. So hopefully that is acceptable. People, we'll open up for general discussion. Pat, you okay with it?
The 1st of October is tricky for me, I don't think I've said that before. But it seems like that's what, it's convenient for everybody else.
Can you make it work?
I'll try.
Okay, we've got faith in you, Peter?
He's still.
Yeah, he might have popped away for a bit.
I'll message him.
Laurie, you okay?
7th of July, I'll be overseas, so I'll be dialing you if I need to.
Okay, it's okay. And I think last time we spoke, although it says in Waila, we will be in Adelaide for the first three, or first four. And then we're all in Waila on the 1st of October. Okay. All right, we've got a recommender. Oh, we can't, can't, we've got to have him in the room.
I've messaged him.
Talking with she stills. I'm going to be out at 11 o'clock.
There he is.
He's back?
Yeah.
Okay, Peter, you okay with the meeting dates at 2.1?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, all right, we'll have a mover, thanks Laurie, a second to thanks Pat, all those in favour? Okay, that one's been resolved. Okay, the terms of reference, Cathy, do you want to lead us through this one?
Take it as read, very, very minor changes based on feedback that came through the Audit and Risk Committee review process. The changes are there in, we marked changes. Probably the primary one is that council may appoint up to two proxies for the council representative, given we found that having only one proxy left us in a bit of a hole.
Okay, we'll open up for general discussion, Laurie? Okay, Pat?
No, it's okay.
Pete?
Yeah, fine by me, thanks.
Couple for me Cathy, in relation to, I know we're trying to address this issue around being ahead of the wave on providing input from the committee. The term review always is a hindsight piece for me. How do we get in front of that and there is input into the strategic agenda? Is that something we could aim for the October meetings?
Yes.
Because that's the bit for me is, review is, you're too late. Concrete's normally set on those pieces there, so I think that'd be something good we can lead into that October meeting around, here's the environmental scan, here's the squat, here's the streams, here's what's happening from a focus and priority point of view, if you're okay with that.
Yep, so we can certainly add that into item 10.1 and have that it is input into the strategy.
Yeah, so I think then that comes to the objectives, and so this is at page 27. So at 2.1, avoid an assurance to council on strategy account. If that's something that fits within the role of this committee, does it fit within the role of this committee on the strategy side?
Certainly, from our perspective, it does.
We comfortable with that? Putting the word strategy in there, Laurie? Pat?
I don't mind that it necessarily is usually within the terms of reference.
Yeah.
That's not generally the role of an audit and risk committee. I know that that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
But it's broader than an audit and risk committee would nominate it.
Yeah, and one of the reforms to the Local Government Act did actually outline one of the roles of the Audit and Risk Committee now is to review council strategic management plans, and so.
That's review, this is input, this is directional.
Which is not generally a role, we're not management, nor are we decision makers.
Yes, just.
I'd suggest that the changes to the Local Government Act of these reviews, I'm sure the intent was to include proactive advice. Now, the first objective is all about talking about adding value for the provision of independent advice and the like. So whilst it may not be traditional for an audit and risk committee to maybe be as influential or directive, certainly the council's intent with the engagement of the independents was to look to provide a higher order level of independent advice into council's decision making. So I'm sure that the council would be very keen to add the extra words to include that as part of the remit of the committee.
Yeah, I'm seeing it as a consultant process where you just think information and the term advice, not a direction. It's have you considered what about not you have to do that piece there? Would you be comfortable with that, Pat? That's why I think we can add the value to make, there's an assurance role in this. But I think there's a broader commercial piece we can play in that. Laurie, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a fine line between being consultants and advisors and having a governance role. But I think the recommendations that we put along is taken from a government's perspective and independent validation perspective, I think should be, should be, because that's how we should be looking at it appropriately.
Because I look at things like SCOS is provided, it's a similar type of, type of piece that's been provided. Yep, so I think management will need, the executive management will need to call out if that line is being crossed.
Well, at the end of the day, it will be, the decision making body is the council.
Yeah.
Not that I'd suggest this would happen, but if the executive management had a particular view on a matter and the Audit and Risk Committee had a different view, both of those views would be put to the council and if the council then make the decision based on the advice and information provided, I'd suggest that it probably wouldn't happen, but you know, that.
Peter, did you have a view?
No, nothing further to add, thanks.
I mean, just to add to that, from time to time over the years, Justin and I have had a conversation in relation to a strategic directions committee or, you know, where do we get that independent advising to council in terms of strategy? And I think that the way that, and in recognising the two different roles at both ends, I think that the way that this committee is unfolding is the value add from strategic input is absolutely there in the first instance. And then at the end of the time, at the end of the game, the value add also in terms of actually achieving that strategy, both from a public value point of view, but also from a financial sustainability point of view. So I think it's, I think it's very relevant that it be included in here.
Phil, can I bring you into this discussion? Would you like to make a comment?
Certainly, whether it's on a borderline or whatever that you should be involved in, I would certainly welcome it. The advice leading in, I think you're quite right. I've always had that view as well, if you're going in to review something, well, is it going to change? Because it's already, that concrete's already set. So I would welcome, from that point of view, as you've suggested, advice, comments, which are considered. Now, this review have great respect from the elected body, and I believe that advice would always be taken on board. It just wouldn't be chucked out, oh no, we're not going to do that. So I'd welcome that as you've described.
Thanks Phil.
And I think that that goes along with administration.
Yep. Cathy, did you want to say? Laurie?
To me, it's just, if that's the taste, then there's a role that we play as an independent audit committee from an assurance perspective. And then whether that sits aside as, they're not being, they're not audit committee recommendations per se, or consulting pieces of work, but they're just almost, I don't know, independent commentary on work that's going on. So, you know, I'd hate to go, the audit committee has endorsed a strategy, because we're not about strategy. You know what I mean? So being able to delineate between the governance and the
Value add.
The commercial sort of voice that we're trying to serve, I'm not telling you how to do things, but it's just a different opinion.
Yes.
Or, you know, different perspective. That's not necessarily relied on for decisions, but it's just an independent voice, and I think that's, as long as that's sort of covered. You know, I'd hate to think we're giving consulting advice that's been relied on.
Maybe you could just use the word input, provision of independent input advice and assurance to council on these things.
Yep.
Sort of less.
Directional.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Mine, I was okay with what was in there, it's really been a challenge back to are we actually doing some of the things in there? And it's probably a question to you, Pete, at 5.4 and 5.5 on page 28. I think we need to look at what the independent council member's bringing or updating this committee on. Because 5.4 is, you're the join between both.
Yeah.
So I think we need to look at that as well as, is 5.5 occurring as well? So just from an action point of view to have a look at that.
Yeah.
Be a standing item on the.
Well, it's really covered in verbal updates at 5.2, but we can broaden that out to it's from both the executive management as well as the council representative. Thanks for that. Okay, so we'll approve that subject to inclusion of the amendment at 2.1, and Cathy, you will have the appropriate words there. So can I have a mover? Thanks Laurie, a second to thanks Pat, all those in favour? Thanks for that work Cathy. We'll move into the work programme. Nothing like working this work.
I'll leave it as taken as read. The work programme has been built around those terms of reference to ensure that all of the items on the terms of reference are actually included in the agenda. Yeah, take it as read.
Is it achievable and are there any stress points sitting in there at the moment? Because I know there was a comment in the performance review for us, basically saying that we don't have that full overview of what's happening in council. And sometimes then if we're asking for something to be done, it's just a greater layer of pressure. So my question is, is there flex in this? If we need something different, you can accommodate it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll open it up for discussions, Peter?
I'm happy with the work programme as it is.
Okay, Pat?
No additions, I think it covers what, in the terms of reference.
Yep. Laurie, okay. I think the recommendation, if we can just take it indicative and put in at the end an extra A. Okay, can I have a mover? Thanks Laurie, a second to thanks Pat, all those in favour? That one's approved as per the recommendation on the screen. Okay, Justin, we're in your hands.
Thank you, I'll take the report as read. Summary level is, over the last couple of years, we've been using a an approach in partnership with the University of SA to look at our organisational culture. We're pretty much now at the end of that process and we're now looking to bring the review sort of more in-house in terms of looking at our own culture plan and doing some work to invest in culture. It's, I don't know if we brought the results, I don't think we did, to the previous Audit and Risk Committee, but it's interesting. We just, not that long ago, did a, essentially a satisfaction survey with our residents and there has been a significant decline and given the prevailing economic conditions within the city with the issues with the steelworks, that was not unsurprised. So the fact that our culture remains relatively positive despite some of those challenges, I think is a major positive. And the other thing that's not included in this report, which I do take great pride in, is that prior to my commencement, we had significant churn of senior executives and senior management and touch wood. Over the last few years, we've been able to retain most of our senior managers, and I think that is a demonstration one of that the organisation's progressing well, but two, it does have a stabilising influence on the views of the rest of the organisation.
Just before we open it up, was the last survey 2023?
Yes.
And has it been a pulse survey post that?
There was one pulse, yep, it's still online, is she? Sue, can I get you to talk to that one? Sue King is our manager of people and culture.
She's going to go and unmute the room, give her a second. Yeah, she's running around now, unmute her.
I didn't realise she was in the room, otherwise I could have got her to speak to her in the first instance.
Got to unmute the microphone. We did have, we did have a pulse survey. The survey results did come to the Audit and Risk Committee, the last round of survey results over, which was the large survey and then the subsequent pulse surveys. And there was just some comments around what did the ratings actually mean? We are, we are still poised to do a closeout survey, which is again, is another pulse survey which provides a three-year or the course of the culture survey to provide where the changes were over the course of it. But we have already done that in-house, so we've actually been able to track where we had improvements and where we had slight declines.
Yeah, Sue, do you have an overarching organisational development strategy? Or as a, of people's terms, human resources strategy?
No, we don't have one of those yet.
All right, thanks for that update. I'll open it up for general discussion, Laurie?
Yeah, a couple of things. When you go through the process, is there much difference in the results that you get from different types or groups of employees? So say field employees versus office-based employees, and what are the, what are the sort of key differences you're finding?
We, it's actually quite well balanced, the number of respondents from both indoor and outdoor crews is relatively balanced. And I would say the things that vary more about what outdoor staff perceive are more benefits for indoor staff, if that makes sense.
So the field staff sometimes have a view that the indoor staff have got better working conditions and working environments and paying and the like. Some of that is perception.
Okay, and so then my second question was, you sort of mentioned there's feedback coming back from the community increasing level of dissatisfaction.
Yeah.
Does the work that council does and the way our team engages, what are the key things that may or may not impact that, that are not external factors? And is there a link at all between our team engagement and team satisfaction, what we're actually doing for the community, if you know what I mean?
So if, my view is, I've got an engaged team and I'm doing stuff for the community, I've hopefully got a more engaged community rather than operating in two separate directions. So just trying to understand if there's, if there's anything there that needs to be, needs to act with or understood.
In all organisations, there is a very clear link between the organisation's culture and staff satisfaction and customer satisfaction. You know, the two go absolutely hand in hand. And so we do need to do that body of work in terms of actually having a look at the customer survey and the detailed feedback that we've got through the customer survey. And then mapping that to the detailed feedback that we've got from an organisational culture point of view to see where the leverages are, that where the, where the opportunity in terms of the internal workings of the organisation that will then actually have an influence in terms of customer satisfaction.
Have you got a feel for the sort of areas that would be the low-hanging fruit?
The, from a causal factor point of view, certainly our systems of management in terms of when a customer request may well come in, the system that is managing the customer requests is clunky. And so therefore response times, et cetera. Yes, exactly. And then, you know, I would suggest it's primarily response times. That is influencing customer satisfaction at the, at the lower level. Where there is also potentially customer satisfaction improvements that can be made is in the, I guess, the strategy and the communication of the strategy out into the community as to what is actually being achieved. We need to do. to do better on that.
I might just add, I might just add to that, that we've got a lot of assets that are at end of life or tied, buildings, cook, gutter and the like. I think when there's the sort of the weight of the world with what's happening with the blast furnace and the steelworks, those, the level of tolerance, for whatever better word, from the community about the general presentation and amenity of our city gets more focus. So our ability to actually then deliver services and meet community expectations is quite challenging. A recent example that we've had is with our trees. We've had now, just recently, a programme to try to attend for many of our trees that are at end of life. And instead of accepting that as a positive, a lot of our community have, you know, quickly said, well, that's because council hasn't ordered them or hasn't maintained the trees and we haven't managed the trees. And you're cutting down trees, why aren't we planting trees? Yet we've actually planted, I think, over 4,000 trees over the last three years. But people see, you know, the, the two dozen trees that have been cut down, not the, you know, 200 that have been closed over the last couple of years. So there is, it's an interesting dynamic within the community and trying to meet some of those expectations is always going to be challenging.
Is that a little bit around how we shape the narrative of communications in the city on what the three will keep things up, is what we say?
Yeah.
And it's, it is the strategic communications and how we shape that is one of the, I think we do it well, but we need to do some more in that space. Another example, and Jade might make some comment in this space as well. So just to reference the tied buildings that we've got across the city and toilets for, you know, as a case in point, the toilets at the foreshore were replaced. And to, you can't just do a light for light replacement of such infrastructure because a light for light replacement of the toilets that were there would not be able to, well, would not be appropriate in terms of the foreshores development as it is today and, and community expectations as to the facilities that are provided. And so the cost of, of replacing a toilet is quite significantly more than perhaps what the community might be expecting it to be. And so then you get the commentary from the community about the expenditure of rate spent on money for a toilet of that nature. Now, it's not a toilet, which is a grandiose toilet, but it is a, a modern piece of, that is absolutely fit for the area and the location that it is, has been placed. But council does get quite significantly negative comments in that sort of an area when we're trying to do work. So communication and understanding how that communication needs to be framed pre-work being done and then during the work being done and then after the work being done is one of the keys that we need to, you know, need to constantly turn our minds to.
But you're always going to have that issue. And I know she gives an update on radio as well as the webinar that, that go out. People are always going to make their own determination in relation, in relation to value for money and spend. And I think that's an ongoing piece. If things are going well, it's easier. When things are difficult, everybody's going to look at every dollar that's been spent and why that's been spent.
And this year was also, sorry Cathy, it was also an abnormal year as well with the change from site to capital values. So unfortunately, that's probably just added extra challenge to trying to communicate that value to money proposition in terms of what council delivers.
And.
Laurie, do you have more?
Through the chair, councillor border is also in attendance at this meeting observing. He has his hands up. Would you accept a question from or a comment from councillor board?
We can take a comment. Would you like to comment?
Thank you Cathy. And thank you Grant. The replies to my local, just picking up.
You've gone on mute.
He's dropped out.
That's probably good. While we're waiting, Pete, did you have any comment?
No, nothing further to add. Thanks Grant.
Okay. Pat, I'll start you off and if councillor comes back, we'll interject.
Okay. I guess a couple of things from the external focus on the customer service stuff. Is there anything that we can be doing, are doing about the clunky interface?
Absolutely. And Sue, again, you might wish to add in here, we've got a body of work which is currently under development in terms of our customer experience framework and really monitoring and managing the customer requests that are coming in, having and we've now instituted a reporting system around closeouts of customer requests so that it is actively being managed. And we are working that through from a management point of view. Systems wise, we are not doing anything at this time in time because we have put on pause the systems modernisation project because of the costs associated with that and the financial position of the organisation. But from a process point of view, absolutely, through the reporting of the customer requested closures, it gives a better and sharper focus in terms of customer requests so that we're able to manage that a bit more closely. Sue, did you want to add anything further?
Yes Cathy, the other thing that we've done is that we have added in key performance indicators for all people, managers around the closeout of their customer requests so that we can track that better along with the work that we're doing around being more proactive internally to bring customer requests to the attention of managers that are outstanding greater than, greater than one week. And also to understand what works are pending. So when customers ring up, we can provide feedback that says that our work, work is pending or it's being postponed and it will be picked up at a, another point of time. So we're trying to be more proactive in, in that space. Also, we are working on our customer experience framework 2.0. So we, in 2021, implemented a customer experience framework. We've now been in the process of reviewing, reviewing that, seeing the actions that we have delivered and what is the next iteration of that framework.
Anything else, Pat?
Yeah, but you said you'd interrupt.
Pidgy back. Okay. Where are you going?
Councillor.
Thank you. I'm not sure how much of that came through. Can you just, I must have dropped out halfway through. Where did you hear me up to?
You said hello.
Oh, well, I just solved a few of the problems that we had actually. So that's a shame. And it was the replies to my local. Sue was almost preempting my query. So replies when a customer request has come through on my local personal experience for me is that there is very occasionally a response. I've had a phone call back, but 90% of the time, and that's not an exaggeration, there is just zero response coming back, whether it's been acknowledged, actioned or scheduled. I've seen the work that I've requested been completed in physical form, but I haven't had a response through any method. So I think that's an area we can improve. I do actually like the system of my local where you can take a photo and log a call. I do think that's the way of the future in a positive way. That was the first point. And the second point was in regards to, I think Cathy was mentioning about the foreshore toilets queries from the community and the exorbitant exaggerated numbers that get thrown around in the rumour mill. I feel as though where appropriate and legal, a full disclosure of those accurate costs and the breakdown, when people see one big number of 400,000 or 360,000 or whatever the, the total number was, and they refer to a new house build for that price, I've, I've heard that the, the cost was around 260,000 for the toilets or thereabouts, a lot less than the total. And then there was concrete works and there were services to the, to the, to the toilets that needed to be included as well. I think a full breakdown of that is going to help the community on the journey with us. There's still going to be people that complain. Certainly from an elected member point of view, it gives us that we can point to directly and say, well, look, here's your facts. You don't have to like it, but at least, at least you know what the exact numbers are. So full disclosure of those costs and also of the procurement process that was followed, where there have been no local contractors that have put in a tender. I think the community should be made aware of that because at the moment, it, it's always the assumption of we give the work to the out of towners and it's always too expensive. I think that if, again, where appropriate, if we can show the community, here's the process followed, here are the options that we had, you know, one tender came back, sort of, it's sort of, we're sort of boxed into a corner. I think it's, sharing that with the community is, is a good step forward.
Okay. Thanks for that feedback. We won't capture that in the minutes. We can just, if executives can just take those comments on board. Laurie, you had a, another question?
Yeah, I guess if you sort of think about the discussion we're talking about, we're talking about the services delivered to the community. And here we're talking about culture and trying to draw the link between the two. And when you look at the report and the headings of the report, we talk about, you know, climate, citizenship behaviour, capital and overall satisfaction. I just want to make sure that we add adequately when we do these surveys covering things like, you know, what, what our, what our purpose is and how we're delivering on our purpose and our service mentality so that we talk about the culture. Are we a service driven culture? Are we a, a purpose led organisation? And our, our people feel like they're actually aligned with, with a grander purpose. So we can actually say that we are living what we say we want to do and we're engaged to that purpose and we're engaged to that outcome. It's much, it's much more meaningful if I'm doing that rather than just some of the softer stuff.
And we haven't got down to that granular level of detail yet in terms of working with all of the staff as to what are the causal factors of this culture outcome that is coming through to us from the reporting point of view. That is the next body of work that will be done to really look at where are the leverage points. And, and I think you're spot on Laurie in the context of what are the drivers of the behaviours of the staff that we're seeing? Is there a connection to the strategic direction of the organisation? So are all of the staff across the organisation aligned to that strategic direction of the organisation? Is there a knowledge of the strategic direction? If there is a knowledge, how is that then naturally delivered in terms of the day-to-day work activities of the individual staff? We haven't yet done that body of work in terms of the mapping of the, the culture outcomes with strategic direction, policies and procedures. How is the, the organisational system influencing the behaviours of the staff which then actually give the collective cultural outcome? And that's a body of work that Sue is currently underway in looking at.
I think Laurie's taken it up level, not to that piece. He's asking, is there an overarching purpose, an organisation design and direction piece? And then the change management piece around, here's the pressure for change and here is all the actionable steps. And the survey is then part of measuring where you're on that journey? Was that where you're coming from?
Yeah, you know, am I proud to work for this organisation? Because what I'm doing is making the city a better place every day. And if someone walks up to me in the street and says, what are you doing? Well, I've actually done this and this and this. And that's how it makes it a better place and why I'm proud to work there. And it sort of all links together.
It does. Yeah, no, I, I was trying to get to that indeed.
What's just work Cathy?
No, no, no. The, I mean, it is, it is absolutely, yes, there is a purpose. Yes, we have a set of values. That purpose and those values are probably not articulated across the organisation enough in order to get that alignment of the staff towards that, that purpose and values. But they exist.
Okay. I cut, Pat off before. My apologies, Pat. We'll come back to you now. So you've got some more questions?
Well, one of them was going to be, this is a long-term report, a report of things that have happened in the long term, much of which we've seen before. But the, the area that's potentially a concern to me was the consistent decline in conscientiousness, which is mentioned in the conclusion and the drop in satisfaction perception. And I guess my question is going to be similar to what Laurie's was, which was what, what actually are we doing shorter term in relation to that? And do we know why? Is it just the general, everything's gone blah? Or, and so therefore we say the workplace has gone like that? Or is there things that can be done? And I guess associated to that, there's a, there's a list of the areas, page 41, that the council's been working on. But that's sort of a general list. There's no timeframes or anything that makes one think, you know, what's being done in a step-by-step managed way to get through that list as opposed to it just being, yeah, a list up there.
Okay.
No, no.
Yeah.
I might, I might look at that in a different way or join into that. I'd sort, and this is blunt, I know. I sort of sat there and said, this is a report on the effectiveness of the organisational culture. I then read the report saying, well, how's it actually addressing that piece? It's just giving me a status of actions or not even status of actions, is my list. And there's a problem. So where I think the gap is for me is where is the overarching organisational development strategy? And there are then various streams that come out of that strategy. And here are the actions and the timeframe. And I think that's something, because you've got a lot of the elements there, it's where, where will priority and focus and resource be applied to address those? So I think that's something that needs to be considered to address. And that fixes your point Cathy there. I'm quite happy to share some drafts of our culture plans as well as organisational development strategies. Again, it's not a cookie cutter, but it may just help the thought process of how you bring all this together and where those levers are. Because if you look at, if you look at the organisation and you look at the four areas of strategic positioning, at the moment, we're in a turnaround position. And a turnaround position has a different culture and a different focus and priority compared to a startup. And this is where Laurie was coming back. Okay. Do we have that guiding vision that everybody's running to? And they can give that elevator pitch of this is why we're here and this is what we're doing. And they're not embarrassed to say they work for the council. It's, we work for the council and look at what we're doing. So I'm happy to share that. But I think that's where the focus should be is around developing that overarching strategy and then pulling that together. Because at the moment, more is funding coming from, from this as well. And is it getting the, the right level of emphasis in an organisation? And having led one before, the cultural element part has got to be run by the chief executive. And it's just got to drive that through, reinforce through and be aligned back to the council as well. So there is the consistency of message. So council needs to be on voice as much as executive needs to be on voice. And that's the part where the mayor plays an important role as well as really that executive chair of, of the council. So I, I think there's some more work to be done. We can note this one as it is to go to council. I know that it says to be forwarded to council. For council to do what? We're going to forward it to, okay. I think you hear is the, we, we agree it's be provided to council for noting this recommendation. But again, I think if we can share some information and some thought then being given to that broader areas, the areas pulling it all together of what we need to do going forward, if you're comfortable with that. Laurie, you comfortable with that approach? Pat? Peter?
Yeah.
Okay. And we've got some good points from councillor border in relation to the delivery side of it. This is back on the cultural piece of it, which does influence delivery. All right. We have a recommendation up there. Mover, thanks Peter. Seconder, thanks Pat. All those in favour? Thanks for that report. Critical area of a business to get right. And once you're over that hundred people mark in organisation, it does change that step change of what needs to be done. Okay. So the next one we have is 2.5 on page 43. So Cathy, over you again?
Yes. As the committee will recall, a couple of months ago, we undertook the committee's performance assessment. And this is a summary of the outcomes of that performance assessment. You know, the areas of strength and areas requiring improvement have come through the commentary. The summary on page 45 identifies that the, the committee's views in terms of roles and responsibility, committee composition and, and so on, is fairly strong through to areas for improvement, being in terms of the capacity to monitor and advise council on readiness of systems of control of ethics, integrity and culture, which is what we've just been talking on there. I'll leave the report as read. The intent for this item is to identify some areas that the committee. And I'll leave the report as read. The intent for this item is to identify some areas that the committee may wish to focus on for improvement in terms of the operations of the committee over the next twelve months.
Thanks. Cathy, I note there on page forty three, it talked about a further breakdown of the survey results. It's going to be provided during the meeting. Have you got something else you're going to share with us? Is that pointing the finger at people?
No, that further breakdown of the results was basically the section one, which was included as an H R A there.
Okay. All good. All right.
Can I just make an initial comment just in relation to the?
I can go to you first if you like. Where are you?
Thank you. Just in relation to the questions and the nuances of the answers in that obviously the same survey went to everybody and yet some of the questions are directed to a subset of that group. As an example, question twenty one, the committee is satisfied with its capacity to do certain things. The committee is a, is a group of four people.
Yes.
And yet there's eight or more answers. And it seems to me that there are some questions that can only objectively correctly or validly be answered by subsets. There's other questions there that potentially, you know, are more validly answered by other groups. And I just think that that then can dilute what it, what could be the, a real message.
Yeah. I think we'll take that on notice. That we'll look at the wording of those because this is to be an inclusive assessment. And if we've narrowed it too far down.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be an inclusive assessment, but to the extent that there are certain things.
You then have to reduce the cohort that's answering that question.
Yes. So, so I mean, lots of these things have things that, you know, this is the bit that's answered by everyone. This is a bit that's only answered by certain people. Just because they're important things, for example, to know, you know, what, for example, how the committee feels about the papers that are presented to it. That others might not be able to have the same insight into. And that's important information to know. And without making it a less inclusive survey, because you've still got lots of things that can be inclusive.
I mean, take that on board in terms of the structure of the survey for the next year.
We're just going to have a general discussion to start with, then we'll dive a bit deeper. So Peter, did you have any general comments or observations?
Not really. Just I suppose the assessments of the don't, the don't know option was interesting because I suppose that kind of comes back to the terms of reference, reference that we're talking about before, whereas council members most probably don't really know what's, what's going on. So there's an opportunity, I suppose for me as a, as a council representative to be a better communicator in that respect.
Yep. Thanks, Pete. Laurie?
I can care with some of the comments. It's hard to answer some of the questions when they really didn't relate to some of the respondents at all. But I was, interesting to see just some of the feedbacks and I think certainly on the improvement areas. And that theme around how, those two things wrong was the effectiveness of some of those service reviews that we have done. And then the urgency of, of actions that are taken through, through the committee. I think it's probably a theme around as a committee had to be most effective, where there are recommendations that have been made. What is the relative weight, the voice of the committee? That's probably given that there's so many common thoughts there, thinking about how we address. See, I'm not, and it could be coming up from council and say, yeah, we actually take it on board and it's got the right level and we think we're acting at the right degree of urgency with, with the recommendations that are coming forward. But that, that probably to me was telling things that were coming through and curious to see how, how we respond to that.
Thanks Laurie. From my point of view, I think it's pleasing. The result, I'm very comfortable with our first assessment. I always see value in the comments. And you get a feel for what, what people are enjoying and what is not working well. And I think there's some rich information that sits within there. I think that we will pull out the service reviews as an operational activity because I think that's a piece of work that is coming back. That's that question. Is the provider appropriate? And also, do we have the appetite to make change? And does the executive have the bandwidth to actually action it? And I think that's the piece that you're bringing back in February.
Yes, absolutely.
Where, where we're at and what is the go forward piece there? Because from my perspective, it's pointless doing work if you're not going to, if you're just going to put it on a shelf. We've got to be committed to that. So to me, it then comes back, back down to, well, what are the key things we would focus on as a committee going forward? And I might just lead the discussion around that. This is, this is my thoughts on that. And then we'll just, so we can catch it. Here are the key three, and they may even be themes rather than specific action items, because I think that's always important. I think we need an item on our agenda at the end of our agenda around reflection on the meeting. And this can then be a two way feedback loop of executive. This is how they're feeling back to the committee and committee. This is how we're feeling back to management. And this is how we felt it went. And here are some feedback potentially on reports or how things are going. So it's that broader feedback loop as you've sat back and looked through a meeting. And I've seen that work well on other boards I've sat on is that, that open, and it's open communication here. It's, it's not a pointing fingers. It's more around, this is what we're sensing, this is what we're feeling, this is what we may need to consider. And it's in confidence at the end of the meeting. And we'll look back. Another one I think is that communication loop. Pete, I think you need to play a broader role than what you're playing at the moment around council to committee, but also committee back to council as well. And I think it's very important. Phil has attended every meeting and I see value in that. But I think part of the recommendation should be probably a step up from council as well, where there was a requirement or a consideration to be given each council member to attend at least one order of many each year, so they can observe what the discussion, discussion is. And if they look at the work programme going forward, there may be of something of interest and they're saying, well, I'd like to be part of that. So I think that two way communication piece, and we've got to allow time on an agenda to understand more what executive are bringing back to this committee that council are focused on. But also from a councillor's perspective, what are they seeing as well? And I think that's that role of you, Peter, back to us. As back, as much as that conduit back to council. I know Phil, you're across everything as well, but I think Peter's got to be that, or that committee member's got to be that conduit. And I think the last one for me is around that strategic agenda involvement. And I think part of that, if that's formalised as in that October piece. And we have some input in relation to, well, how, how would that form? This is that issue you raised before Laurie. So I was seeing the three as that reflective point, the communication point and that strategic agenda. How do we get in front of that piece going forward? Because just sitting back, I don't, I don't know if everybody's got in their mind, this is a turnaround situation. Not a startup, not a maintain and enhance. It is a different perspective that needs to be applied across the business going forward. So those were my three, but I'll open up for, for general discussion. I'll go to probably you first Laurie. Your thoughts on the top three?
Well, I think I sort of touched on that, around that, that bit on the urgency side of it. If we're going to be effective as a committee, we need to make sure that the, the voice is heard and that the, the messages are meaningful. Because if, if not, either the committee isn't as effective as it could be, or the focus of what we're doing isn't, isn't quite right. And I think that, that's the bit I think we should just make sure we're comfortable with.
And just on that, maybe October is too late. To that, maybe that. And I know, I know, we still had a scheduled time. We're going to sit up with the council anyway. So perhaps that's a February piece for us.
Yeah, that's probably the key.
Okay, all right. Pat?
Yeah, I have the same view as Laurie in relation to that. And as for the communication loop, yes, I think it's really important. One other thing that, I mean, I know you're saying council members should be required to attend a meeting.
Encouraged.
Whether or not that's going to happen. And I think another way that can help. No, whether it's just extra, but sometimes for council meetings, they get lots of pieces of paper. What are reasonably lengthy minutes just because of all the gulf you have to put in minutes for these sorts of meetings? And something I do elsewhere as chair is do a very brief one page summary of the main things that we look at. They go with the minutes. So for those who are of a mind to read everything, they can read everything. For those who would just not read them anyway, it gives them a simple one page to read. Helps with that communication loop reinforced by the committee liaison person.
Okay. Thanks, Pat. Peter?
I'm happy with the way the conversation's gone so far and what you consider the top three, but certainly from that communication point of view and being the conduit between the committee and, and council, I certainly acknowledge that that that's a pretty top priority for me.
Okay. All right. So I think the three we've got is that strategic urgency and agenda. We've got the communication, which with consideration around step up of the council member as well as potentially a summary being provided. And then that reflection on the agenda, if that, if we take that as our, our three, we comfortable with that? Pat, yeah, maybe. What, what's missing?
No, I thought we had four.
Oh, there's a fourth one.
Urgency is just into a two in one.
You joined them into one.
Okay, we split them.
Yeah, okay. Now that was, that's okay. I was just, I put in my head there were four and then suddenly there were three. Well, I got missed, but nothing got missed.
Okay. All right. Can we have a mover? Thanks Laurie. Seconda, thanks Pat. All those in favour. As I said, that's passed. I think from a first point of view, that's a very good result for us. And people open enough to put comments in. That's always a key for me. If you never see any comments in there, you've got a problem. Okay. The next one we have got is always exciting. Maybe to you Cathy?
Yeah, thank you. And I referenced this earlier in the meeting during the business arising around risk management, emergency management and business continuity. Again, take this report as read. What I want to say is that probably over the last couple of years, we have not had the necessary resources in place to really refine our work around emergency management, business continuity, et cetera. We have been doing some work. It's not that there's no work that, that has been done, but we now have a risk partner, W H S and risk partner engaged who has the skills to bring this body of work together in a way which is reflective of the nature of the risks that this organisation does have. So I'm confident that the body of work that, that is currently underway will actually address our gaps in the current system around emergency management, business continuity and risk management. And that that will all come back to the February council meeting. As you will see, as attachments to this report are to external reviews that were undertaken by the mutual liability scheme. And those reviews are showing that our risk culture and that our risk systems and processes do need quite some work. So we are now working with the mutual liability scheme or, or local government risk services to get the, put the systems in place across the organisation. And as I said, that will come back in February.
Yeah, I'll, I'll probably start off on this one, then I'll open up. I, I think provided by the L G A, mutual liability scheme is good. It's, it's a very good framework that's used by the large accounting firms as well, the advisor side of it. I think what would, what is needed is there are various streams they've identified that you need for a effective risk management going forward. And I think what we need is here are each of the streams. This is the current state that's been assessed. This is the end state we want to get to. And here are the items that sit under each streams because you've given us a list. Mine is how does that move the dial on each of the bits? And where, where then is the timeframes and priorities that sit with that? And I think if you identify here is the stream, this is what we want to get to. Here are the items with the, action items with the dates. It's going to help us to say, yes, we're happy we're going to get to end state or no, you've actually got to change some things and potentially apply a resource to move quicker. Because I read that and I was quite concerned that that's our, you know, and we've got risk in our committee title. Is that's where we're sitting from a risk profile point of view at the moment. So you've got a document there that's going to assist you saying, well, here's your stream. What is what sits under each of that? And how quickly we're going to move through that dial to either the end state that we need on that piece there. So that, that's my view at the start. I'm going to open it up for, for general. And then we'll loop back around where to from here. So Pat, I'll go to you first.
Yeah, I would have thought that's the sort of work that you're engaging to spalding.
Correct.
To assist with. So that's
Yes.
The sort of work you expect as an outcome on that work.
Yes, a full action plan will come through that.
And I get the impression that that's going to happen within the next couple of months.
Correct. Yes.
So that will put us in a more comfortable position in terms of at least identification and an understanding of what can and can't happen going forward when that might happen. So obviously it's concerning where we're at now. It's good that we now know exactly where we're at now, sort of. And it's pleasing that we're engaging, yes, an expert in the field to do this work.
Are there, is a mutual liability scheme applying a penalty to us, a high premium because of our risk profile?
And no, we are actually performing quite reasonably well in terms of the and from the W H S point of view as well.
Okay. Thank you. Peter?
I suppose just a general comment. I'm just glad that this work packet is finally moving forward because it has been languishing for quite some time. So yeah, it'd be pleasing to see where we sit in a couple of months' time.
Laurie?
I, I think the, the plan, the documents are good. My, my question is if we were to test this and say we had an event happen like Steelworks shuts down and there's no operator that comes in for six or nine months and we got a situation where we've got a lot of contractors that don't have any work, a lot of people that can't pay their bills, revenue services, blah, blah, blah. Does the document, would the document stand up? Would we be able to use, refer to this to be able to keep things going in the event we had a, a citywide massive event like that happen and probably on a more practical level, whilst we've got frameworks and plans in place, do we need to be considering, you know, how we, how we plan for events that may or may not happen going forward on a practical sense so that we're sort of one step ahead?
In response, I believe that whilst we don't have all of the scenarios mapped out in, in detail, we do have the basic structure in place in terms of the establishment of the necessary escalation points and the establishment of the emergency management committee in the event that an emergency does arise and whether that emergency is something of that nature, which is then going to impact from a financial perspective on the council itself in terms of its revenue or in terms of manner in which the city is progressing forward. Or whether it was an emergency such as a shutdown of all electricity and, and energy across the city and therefore we were, we're in a, a circumstance where our basic services cannot actually be delivered. And the city is in a position of emergency. So we do have those basic structures in place. I am confident that we can respond in the event of an emergency that arises and confident that we have responded whereby or in circumstance where there have been minor emergencies from the perspective of individual departments maintaining their business continuity. And this body of work is going to take the organisation to its, to a position that it won't be by dint of the people that are in the organisation, that it'll be a system that will ensure that no matter who is, who is here. that the plans can be implemented.
Yeah, but what we don't have is that overarching here is the scenario of Stillworks in receivership and shutdown for a period of time. And what, what does that mean? And how would we respond to it? We don't have those scenarios. So are we in a position where we should be starting to consider those scenarios? Are we at that point yet? Or is that still a monitor and a conservative? Because you can play it, we can monitor, or now we go into mode where we plan?
We have certainly got some scenarios outlined, our emergency management plan and our response plan, a detailed response plan. So for example, if it was a fire or if there was an explosion that cut the Augusta Highway and the Lincoln Highway off, and so the city was isolated. And those plans have actually been, those scenarios have actually been talked about. And there are plans in place around those sorts of scenarios. Have they been reviewed in recent times? No, they were developed by some years ago.
I think we're more about the viability question. Are we at a stage where the environment is such this piece of work or consideration needs to happen? Rather than at that activity level of, you know, earthquake, power outage. This is a broader piece around the environment of while it is in this state here, is it time?
Specific risk.
Yep.
The reason, the reason for me is if I look at the council's balance sheet in terms of the operating depth and where that's, it's dependent on a lot of things, number one. And number two, if an event like that was to an eventual aid, the community most broadly looks to leadership and strong leadership at that time around what is the way forward? And what, what's the, you know, what's happening? And whether that be a state government or a local, local government issue. It's how we're able to give confidence to the community and respond in that time. And I would say if you went, you know, consequence likelihood, likelihood is sort of increasing at the moment. All that sort of thing is pointing in that direction. So how do we try to at least be ready to be ahead of the curve for that type of a thing? Because that to me is more likely to happen than an earthquake, for example.
But probably over to Justin. Oh, sorry, Katie, do you want to finish? No, I think it's a question to, as much to Justin as well as to Phil. Is where they're sitting at the moment in relation to the environment and the priority given to this consideration. Because if you, if you look at it from a normal business point of view, they've got a piece of capital sitting there that deals with these type of events. Okay, is the balance sheet set up as well as the expenditure side set up to address? It's one that's been considered. This is how we'd go about it.
If I can, I guess just make a preliminary comment. I think that we have as an organisation started that consideration, although not in and of itself in its, its own piece of work. Can I suggest that perhaps this conversation be held during item five point one, five point two? So that the, a more fulsome conversation can occur in terms of where the city is at and in terms of DFG and the influences that are currently out there from the environmental point of view.
We can do it.
Yeah.
Laurie, did you have anything else?
Nothing else.
Pete, I went to you. I think we're done. But as you said, you got that piece of work that's been done. I would encourage around here are each of the streams. And this is what we're doing on those pieces. All right, we'll note the report mover. Thanks, Laurie. Laurie, Laurie. Second of thanks, Pat, all those in favour. That one's passed. We've got the procurement. Cathy, did you want to talk to that? Or Grant, did you want to talk to that? Give Cathy a break. Justin, do you want to have a chat?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to talk for this one. So since this report deferred from the last meeting, so it's a little bit behind now. But so we just ran it for July and August due to the time of previous meeting. Council's already reviewed this one. We do know there's probably more exemptions than we would normally expect for that period of time. But the four out of the eight related to the airport, which we know, council had already sort of been advised that those activities would be happening and there would be exemptions around the activities just due to the very tight timeframe. So they would be expected and, you know, the other items that are on there have been reviewed and are considered acceptable. And they're actually quite low value. There's sort of a few of them are just above the thresholds anyway.
Just on those, those four around the airport, is that the same provider for the four or are they different providers?
Different providers.
For each one, yeah.
Yeah, so we had the main provider and then he, they assisted with the works around providing contractors for the other, the other sub, sub-works that needed.
Are they expensed or capitalized?
They will be expensed. So we're putting them through the, as design, detailed design type works.
And we've got coverage for that in the budget?
Yeah, so basically when we, when council approved the, our 2.4 million, part of the reason why we approved that at that time was so that we had money to move ahead with the initial works. So basically our, some of our contribution to the project is actually design works.
So it's going to be capitalized? That was my question.
Yes. Yeah, so it's coming out of that. So we approved our contribution part, portion of the expense. Yeah, sorry. So we had the budget coverage to cover.
That's fine.
Yeah. Yep. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we're opening up for discussion, Pat. Pete?
Yeah, just, just a general question. Grant, we raised at the ordinary meeting on October about providing a summary of what goods, works and services were being spent locally. Because at the moment, this breakdown is only, it only mentions a non-local spend. So are we going to see that change in reporting from now on?
Yeah, so this is just the same report that went to council in that period. Because it's obviously just a bit out of sequence because of the, we deferred some matters from the last audit committee meeting. But yes, so the procurement team, when they prepare the, the next quarterly report, the council will see in January or February that that change will be made.
Laurie? Just out of interest, on page 110, are you trying to tell us with the lights, they're trying to give us back the old lights? Is what you're saying there? I was a bit confused.
Oh, we reckon that they took the opportunity to, to order some globes at the time. So we, what happened was, what we think happened, we moved, we paid for the light towers to be moved from Benner Oval to Jubilee because we bought new ones. So Benner, at the time, there was some discussion around changing the globes and they ordered them, but they didn't end up doing that work and charging it for us. So they, they've sort of had them sitting in stock, these new globes, whereas globes went across with the, with the light towers. Yeah, so it's, so we get the old words are in.
It's operational, I just.
Yeah, yeah.
What you're telling us is?
It was an interesting.
Are they selling back globes or?
Which is one of the reasons why it was easy to go through them as well. They actually had already ordered the correct globes and just had them sitting in stock, basically, is what we think happened.
A bit of feedback on that. Again, I'd roll that up at a higher level. I don't think we need, from our perspective, the level of detail there. So save yourself some time.
So you don't want to know about the lux?
No.
I suspect though that they just provide us with the same report they provide council.
But again, it comes back to what's, what's council as well. Is there time to step back and step up as well from a council point of view? Yep. Because I'd like to say 110 lux if we're going to go.
It's no winning.
Okay. All right, we have a recommendation that is sitting up there. A mover. Thanks, Pat. Second of thanks, Laurie, all those in favour. That one's passed. Treasury, Grant?
Yeah, so it's not the most exciting part in the world. We do provide this one more from a legislative point of view. As a required under the Local Government Act, have to do a report each year on our investment activities. We've added in loan performance because that's actually, we don't really have investments. So lives actually have a little bit of excitement, but that's just reports on how we're performing against our treasury management policy in that regard. So yeah, there's no concerns. At the moment, we'll know that, we now know that we're operating outside of our thresholds for fixed loans currently. Moving into the current year, that's worth noting. But that is a decision and we're reporting to council each month on that in their monthly reporting. Because with the land sale coming through, if we fix now, we'll actually be operating for a longer period outside of our thresholds. Operating purposely outside of those thresholds right now, with low fixed amount. But over the last year, we were operating a bit older.
So if we look at page 118, that maturity date is facility maturity date? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes, so there's a, if it's got a fixed portion, it's when that fixed it matures. And then it will roll back into its, so you know, for instance, CAD 139 fixed, they have different maturity dates. Once that matures, we don't actually pay the money back, it just becomes variable again and rolls back into the main CAD 139. But yeah, for all the other ones, that it's when the facility itself matures.
Sure. The one we've got, the, that matures on the 9th, 10th, 7th, 24, what's happened with that one?
That's the one, so that's the one we actually allowed to mature. We didn't refix. And now we've, we're actually operating just below our thresholds for fixed loans. So that's rolled back into 139 now. So that, that facility actually has a $14 million balance, the CAD 139. But the way CADs work, you're, you're able to fix portions of it for up to five years.
Can I suggest for the next one, if we can just split them between fixed and floating?
Yeah.
Two tables.
Two tables, yeah.
Makes it easy.
Yeah.
And if we can just call out then what's the maturity of the facility as much as the repricing schedule?
Yes, yes, so that is too, yeah, yeah, fine. That's my problem.
And so we're running about 180 basis point credit on top of cash rate is what they charge us roughly for our facility.
Yes.
Of variable.
Yeah, and they, and they will do, every so often they'll do an out of cycle discount. They have done that over the last few years. They've actually brought that, that down. But now it's sort of stabilized around there. And then normally, but they always move when the official rates move.
Yeah, straight away or they give you?
Yeah, literally they'll, they'll announce that that afternoon from the next morning.
Yeah. And do you get a rebate back based on their performance? So?
Yes, we do. So they've actually, just this last week, I believe, or the week before, they announced. So they actually had a record profit last year, the ODF, which I think is just to do with more movement in loan facilities happening in, in the sector. So they, and they announced a record distribution. And so I think we got about 37,000 compared to about maybe something in the twenties the year before. So we've had quite a bump in our thingy. And you get your, based on your loan balances, portion of their balance sheet. So yeah, and so what they basically say is it actually, in theory, gives you about another further point one discount on your loans and a point, not that we have investments, but if we did, a point one, then.
Look, 180 points credits, spreads not.
It's, oh, it's very, yeah, they are. But they've tried to make sure over the last few years, they've like compared themselves to the other banks. And while they actually provide a much better, like no one else provides CADs in, we're not even in other states have CADs. We're very lucky in South Australia to have that facility. So they already provide something that the other banks don't. But they also have made sure that they are probably the most competitive in price compared to what we can get there.
So again, going forward, if we just split two tables, fixed, floating, repricing date and then maturity date of facility, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And probably overall coverage. So we know we're at X percent of drawdown.
Yes, okay.
On that piece there. Is this going to council? Is it just to us?
It went to council. So once again, normally it would go to you and then we'd go to council, but just because of the cycle we've, it's cancelled.
All right, we've got the recommendation. We're just noting it now. So it's not to go through. Mover. Thanks, Pat. Second of thanks, Laurie. All those, oh, sorry, open up. Dominated that one there. I'll go back. Comment, Pat? Someone talk about spreads? Okay. Talk about BBSY, BHSW. Okay. Performance of, okay. Pete?
Nothing further.
Laurie?
Happy to defer to your expertise on that one.
Okay. All right, we have the recommendation. So mover, Laurie, second of that, Pat. All those in favour? That one's passed. Thank you. Are you going to take this one?
Over to Sue.
Going to go Sue.
Sue, do you want to brief on this one?
Actually, I might ask Alicia. Sorry to bounce people around. I just wasn't here when that was pulled together, if that's okay. Yep, so this one has been put forward to the committee. It's a review of the HR policies. So previously, a report had been sent through to the committee. So this report is just outlining the processes that are undertaken with the HR practices when reviewing policies and putting, I guess, opening the floor for any questions that may come back.
Thank you. All right. Anything, again, this was, we talked about before, this sits within the delegation to executive. It doesn't go through to the council. And I mentioned last meeting, I've had a discussion with Cathy around, I would normally see this in a corporate that would sit at a board level. And we were just going to have a general discussion around those components. So Pat, anything from your perspective?
No, the policies unnoticed is no PIG policy listed as, I would have thought that would have been part of the, some, I mean, it's very similar to the employee complaints and disciplinary and so forth. It's just not in the list, so.
Which is that, sorry?
Public interest disclosure. Yeah, that is a separate governance policy.
So it's got a different category.
Correct. Yes, these are all the people and cultural, human resource management policies that the organisation has. We've got a separate cash, cash and policies, which are governance policies that include the public interest disclosure, fraud, corruption, control, those sorts of things.
And there's no, this, this doesn't have the review dates lists or anything. One of the things that these often come to us for is just to know that there's policies covering X things. And the other is just know that the policies are up to date. Can't tell that from this reporting, so.
So in, thank you for that feedback. Yes, recognise that. This is the full suite of human resource and WHS policies that we have in place under the Local Government Act for the committee's information. All management responsibility in terms of human resource management is provided or the power is provided directly to the chief executive officer. And so they don't go through council. And these policies that have been listed in here have all been reviewed. And many of them are out for consultation at the moment. So what we can do is certainly provide those dates to you because the role of the committee is to ensure that we've got appropriate human resource management principles and policies in place to ensure that the organisation is actually being managed appropriately.
Could we just roll that up into an annual disclosure around?
Yeah.
It's being complied with or here is an exception. So on a range of things, this is where we're up to on pieces that sit with the executive.
Yeah, we'll include that in the work programme under the ethics, culture, integrity piece to ensure that.
I mean, presumably you've got to register, like a spreadsheet. You could just provide us with a copy of a spreadsheet which has review data.
Do you want to know it though?
Well, it's not very linked.
Would you rather just say, yes, it's being dealt with as a testation from management? Or do you want to see the data?
Well, whatever provides less work and is most information.
I'm wondering whether or not under the, the ethics, culture and integrity piece is that there is an annual declaration by the executive officer that all of these are in place. And I think that then we build into our internal audit programme. So once every four years, an internal audit to double check that all of the policies are in place or that they've been reviewed in the proper frequency that is actually identified. And so the control is around the internal audit programme rather than an annual schedule of policies coming through to the committee.
I'm happy with that.
Laurie?
Yeah, my, my question was, yes, I am happy with that, but can I ask a question as well? I'm happy with that. I'm just looking at a list of policies. And I don't know what's, what's in, what's out, how they come about, how they don't know. Is there, is there a basis on which these are the policies that we have? Or do we just make them up as we go? Because they're the most relevant for the organisation at the time? And which are, which are active, which are not relevant, which do we need to get rid of? Because I'm sure, for example, we didn't have a, I don't know, a work from home policy a few years back when that comes in. So I mind you really about understanding how they come in to being, the relevance of them and how we do it. Just curious moment.
And Sue, you might wish to add, add to this, but in that element, there is a mature framework in terms of human resource management that is being developed collectively across the network of people and culture managers. across the network of people and culture managers. Um, though that mature framework of human resource policies is based on, on best practice, but it is also based on where and how some other things are actually managed, so for example, the example that, um, Pat raised in relation to public interest disclosure. That is a requirement under the legislation and so it's governance framework as opposed to the human resource management framework. And remuneration, for example, remuneration of the chief executive officer is set by the remuneration tribunal. So there is no remuneration policy that is required in terms of the council managing the remuneration of the chief executive officer. Um, and so, so there is a framework that exists which defines in part what the policies are that are needed.
So if I, if I'm asking the question, uh, how do I know if we have got a mature framework? If we've got twenty percent of it, fifty percent of it, we've got every policy covered?
Yeah.
We've got big gaps, our policies are actually on two plus, just trying to understand where we sit in the, in the world of, um.
The, the actual framework itself.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think, I think that that is something that we could bring back to the audit risk committee to give you the certainty that we do have all of the necessary policies in place. Sure, you've got the list of policies, but what is the framework? And how is that, how is that framework managing the human resources across the organisation?
Yep.
Um, very happy to do that, it starts with, there are a number of points in the Local Government Act, which are the principles of human resource management that the chief executive officer needs to apply across the organisation and then it.
Yeah.
Sue, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh, no, uh, other than just the, the H R policy framework, just to echo what Cathy has been saying, this has actually been pulled together, it's, it's one of the, the very few things unfortunately that's happening sector wide, um, so the people and culture network have built, um, a lot of the, or done a lot of the work around the H R policy framework and then, and then shared those, um, each council then has its own anomalies that sit under the enterprise agreement, um, policy positions that need to, um, arise, arise from that document. So more than happy to bring something back that shows, um, the body of work that we've been doing over the last, um, eighteen months has been, um, twofold. Working with the people and culture network to, to build this framework and have a list of what are considered to be key H R policies, um, that are consistent across all councils. And then we've also been doing a lot of work around, um, what previously existed, um, for this council, what documents? And maybe that's, um, another point that we could bring to this committee, policies that we have rescinded, that, that no longer serve a purpose for the organisation or have been significantly replaced, um, we were mapping all of this as we went, so we do have a very detailed programme that shows, um, the review, what, what have been significant rewrites, um, versus what have been updates. So, um, it, it might be relevant to bring that back to the committee.
Yeah, for, for me, I'm not sure, um, Dan's, like the, the detail of all the workings, it's really the summary to go, this is how we do it, this is how we come about it and we sit as a, you know, a well-considered group of policies, we've rescinded twenty-seven, we've added fourteen new ones and we think we've got a strong coverage. That, that's probably more, just to give confidence that there's some sort of process that's been gone through.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and, and with the work health and safety policies and procedures, um, we were using, um, L G. L G R S framework, um, for all of our work health and safety policies. So we don't actually write those, we actually, um, download them from a portal and then review them against our practices.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Peter?
No, nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, I'm the one who started this one, um. And, and in talking to Cathy, normally you'd have that remuneration around the chief executive and the executive, saying that's covered by, um, policy, H G A policy. The chief executive. Chief executive, I mean, so how do, how do you deal with, you've then got a management policy around others?
Yes, so we do a periodic, um, review, um, benchmark review compared to other councils, particularly councils of the same size as ours.
Yep.
So that's done every couple of years, just to ensure that our remuneration levels, uh, measure it with the market.
Uh, again, I didn't say a policy on that, so.
There needs to be, we don't, we don't have a policy position, we have a practice.
So I'd have a policy, now I'd have a policy on performance as well at an executive level, how you deal with performance. Um, the, the one, and now I look from an exposure point of view of the organisation, it would be around redundancy. Now, the redundancy policy sits with the executive management, it doesn't sit with the council?
Uh, that is correct, um. That is correct, with the exception of us, the C E O.
C E O, yeah.
The decision capacity, the redundancies are reflected in either, um, employment contracts, uh, common law employment contracts or within the industrial instruments being our enterprise agreements. Um, uh, so they're outlined in there, um, as with most contracts and policies, it's unless mutually agreed. So, um, for example, for all the common law contracts, I think it's three months or six months, six months, um.
So that's delegated to you, because I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here as the council member now.
Yeah.
As the chair of, of audit risk, saying that, how, how, what gives you any confidence that there's not these poison pills sitting in?
Yeah.
That could have a material impact on the organisation if they're enacted.
Yep, yeah, so we don't have a policy, um, with all of our, um, common law contracts are basically the same. That's our standard clauses, uh, we have those contracts reviewed from time to time to make sure they're contemporary with, um, through, um, external employment lawyers. Um, they don't change a lot, so, um, so to respond to the question as an elected member, how would you get line of sight to that? Suppose you'd ask the question of the C E O and I'd give you the response that we've got standard contemporary arrangements documented in our employment instruments.
The Local Government Act requires that if there is any significant change to the senior executive management within the organisation, that that change must be consulted with the council. That is one element of control that sits around it. The second element of control is that the budget must be endorsed by the council and the salaries budget is on an annual basis endorsed by the council. And if there are any changes in that, that needs to go back to the council for adoption and so the.
Up in that, a provision, a redundancy provision wouldn't show up in your budget. It'd only be enacted if there is a redundancy activity.
Correct, and so a redundancy activity, um, is, it, well, I suppose if it's been built into the budget, then it wouldn't show up.
But even if it's not, um, the chief executive couldn't move half of his executive out of the organisation if he wanted to and there's no requirement for engagement with council, so that's an exposure?
Correct.
Yep, okay, yeah. What, what about on then on the, um, award, so people through the, uh, enterprise agreement, how's, who, who sets that this is the appropriate redundancy clause? That sits in there, because again, another big exposure sits there from an organisation point of view.
Yeah, so our E B, um, includes a no force redundancy clause, consistent with what many councils have got. Under the, uh, industrial relations commission, um, if we were to look at redundancies, there are, um, under the act requirements in terms of, um, payout arrangements for staff based on use of service, um.
Probably say applying fair work, applying fair work, so there's not X months on the top of fair work.
The enterprise agreement sets out exactly what the. Things are in terms of payouts of staff where, uh, their positions have been made redundant based on use of service and, um, and so they're fixed in the enterprise agreement at this point in time because that's the agreement that has been registered with the commission.
Yeah, and just adding to the comment that was made before, whilst it feels like it may be a, a loose control, it's actually very tight and we'll get to it shortly when we talk about the budget. But if, if the C E O and executive made a decision to make, uh, significant changes to the organisational structure and that resulted in significant number of, um, uh, redundancy payments, we would need to report that to council because we just wouldn't have the budget, um, to be able to, to, um, fund the, the redundancies. Um, so that's, um, in addition, um, we, uh, through the internal management reporting, uh, we have what we call, uh, the cabinet meeting, so the mayor and deputy mayor meet the executive. Again, if we were contemplating making any significant structural changes, uh, to the organisation, we would discuss that. Um, and I'm sure the mayor and deputy mayor would say that's something that would need to be reported to council. Um, you know, the budgets are that tight and everyone knows everyone, so, um, and even just having one or two staff leave the organisation, um, unfortunately, people tend to know that those events are happening, so, yeah.
I suppose it's just an observation, a, a no redundancy policy. I don't think it's contemporary, um, but that observation.
We, we agree, we agree, um, they, it has been a longstanding arrangement, uh, within local government. The value of trying to push to get that changed, um, noting that that would receive significant, um, pushback from staff and unions. Um, we've not got to the point where we've seen the value outweighing the, the, the negative impact it would have on culture and the organisation also from a financial point of view. Having said that, you know, when we start to contemplate things like, um, privatization of childcare services, for example, that's something that we will need to think about as part of those, those processes. Um, and given that enterprise negotiations have been in place for such a long time and we're now in a, a time where there's not much, um, left to be negotiated, um, um, it, it's only a matter of time before we probably get to that point, um, so.
Laurie, excuse me. I'm not that close to understanding what the requirement is to, um, to make a comment to us, but.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that very few councils in South Australia have managed to get rid of that clause and those that have, have managed to do it because they have a very high contract rate, so a very high level of number of employees on contracts who voted it through because it had no effect on them, um, but most other councils have really, have struggled to get anywhere with that.
It is recognised at the Local Government Association as a sector-wide matter that needs to be addressed sector-wide. Uh, and absolutely each individual council does need to have a look at it, but the sector-wide approach, I think that will be needed and that we started to investigate, uh, a couple of years ago, a number of years ago, is where the primary change management and change approach needs to occur.
I'll look at where's your overarching O D strategy, where are you drawing workforce from in the future? What's the appropriate infrastructure you need from remuneration, reward recognition? So again, it's just a view, um, just something to take on board, but I look at it from then exposure point of view, that if you're in a position of turnaround, how much flexibility have you got to make decisions for all the levers? All right, I think we've had enough discussion on that, uh, we've got a couple of actions coming out of that broader summary piece around, uh, as Laurie outlined it. And can we have a mover? Thanks, Peter, second to thanks Laurie, that one is approved, thank you for that. Um, Grant, do you want to talk this one?
Yep, so. Um, this was just writing basically a cover report, just, I think I wanted to be able to close out. Uh, so the report in, in the confidential session last, um, uh, meeting, I sort of provided the update and there were only a couple of items which are very low risk. Um, or almost fun noting, uh, for council as, as a potential improvement, so they, they'd been moved to the work programme for our work internally, for our audit, uh, I T team as they work through, uh, but all the, um, the higher risk items had already been actually at that time. So this was just to, um, so the audit committee had a report to note out that's where, up to date, closing out the, the order items and then obviously they'll roll through again in six months' time, we'll have another report to bring through.
Yeah, the key for me going forward is when these first reports come up and we identify that these are the risks we're willing to accept, we note that we're comfortable with that, that's the bit I was looking for, because I'm sitting here ready, so the risk has been accepted, I'm saying, by who? And I was generally comfortable with that as well, so I think that's just something going forward. And, and I think we had that, put that in policy as well, that if they were below a surgeon category, we would note them and then it was over to management to work out, uh, timeframes to cure.
Yeah.
If, if, if any, it may just be accepted risk, so that was the piece for me.
Yep.
All right, um, I'm going to just put the recommendation, do I have a mover? Thanks Pete, second to thanks Pat, approved, thank you. Um, everybody okay to keep going?
Yep.
All right. Uh, Grant?
All right, thank you, now, we were planning, so this is where we're going to go into the, the workshop as part of this.
Oh, at the end, are we?
Yeah, so it's sort of, uh, yeah, within the items, so how did you want to handle that? Because.
I think that we open this item, that you get a mover and a second to, to suspend formal meeting procedures and then we do a workshop.
Well, how about we deal with five?
Um.
Because.
Yeah, some of the workshop will inform the discussion of five point one in the, um, childcare centre considerations. So, you know, some of the information that we want to present and then talk about during the workshop around the financial position of the council will assist when you're deliberating on item five point one, um.
Okay, can we do five point two before we go into workshop then?
Yep, can I also just add, lunch will be here in nine minutes.
Okay, sorry.
Lunch will be here in about nine minutes.
Okay, well, let's, how about we, how about we, um, are we comfortable to vary the agenda? And we're going to work through lunch.
Yeah.
I'll make it work. Can we, uh, agree to vary the agenda and go into five point two? And can we agree to then go into confidence, can I have a mover, thanks Laurie, second to thanks Pat, okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, we will now close the meeting.
Defer, defer the remaining items until the next meeting and to close the meeting.
Yep, close the meeting, uh, mover from Laurie, second to from Pat, done. Thanks, Pete, you go.
Thanks, everybody.